Thank you for joining us on this joint committee with committees on public safety and governmental and military affairs and our good friends from the committee on health and human services on this second day in February, 3 o'clock in room 225. This hearing is being streamed live on YouTube and if there's any kind of technical glitches, we will make notice as to when we will reconvene this committee. For those who are testifying in person or online, we're going to limit all of your testimony to two minutes. We have a very full agenda this afternoon and we'd like to begin with Senate Bill 2305 relating to missing persons. First on our testifiers, this is Kathy Betts from the Department of Human Services.
Good afternoon Chair, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members. Joseph Compoz, Deputy Director, Department of Human Services here on behalf of Director Betts. The department stands on its written testimony. Thank you.
In support.
In support, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Vincent from DLE.
Good afternoon Chair Waukai, Chair San Juan Ventura, Vice Chair Lafontaine, Senator Rhodes. Department of Law Enforcement strongly supports this bill. We would like to recommend an addition. Sorry, wrong bill. But we, I'd like to recommend that we prefer this bill over another bill being heard later, Senate Bill 2486. This bill has the preferred measure from between the two. Thank you.
Caroline Cudario, excuse me, from the Department of Health.
Good afternoon Chair Waukai, Vice Chair San Juan Ventura and Vice Chairs and members of the committee. My name is Caroline Cuddy-Rao. I'm the Director of the Executive Office on Aging and Attached, the Department of Health. We stand in strong support of this bill for missing persons. It has a lot of merit. It will build off of the Miley Alert and it will help to, one elder gone missing is one too many. But what I'd like to do is tell you a personal story that I shared with another committee is that my dad went missing for about an hour and a half, about a year and a half ago. And thank God, we had a lot of family and friends around and they were able to, we were able to locate him. He was about a mile from the house. He had driven off in his car, which he's not supposed to be driving, but he did. And, but we found him, but he could have been one of those statistics. And if this, a note like this was in place, it would have kept him safe. So, thank you so much for listening and letting me testify. Mahalo.
Aintree Walter Dos from the State Council on Development of Disabilities. Thank you, Aintree. Lila Moore from Kukua Council has submitted testimony in support. Kalani Werner from UPW has submitted testimony in support. Peggy Merzwa from the Hawaii Public Health Institute has submitted testimony in support. Holly Tesler, Hawaii Public Health Association has submitted testimony in support. Eric Abin, standing in support. Thank you, Eric, in support. Louis Erdishe.
Hi, thank you. Yes, thank you. Good afternoon Senator, I'm Louis Erdishe, Director of Disability Rights Center. I'm just going to share a quick anecdote, personal experience, which I think really illustrates the point. A few years ago, I had some friends in Canada who came out here. They stayed in the same condo in Waikiki that I live at. They were here for their, for her son's graduation. They brought their aunt who had dementia, who wandered off and she was missing overnight. The next day, she never showed up at the graduation. People are having lunch. Where's Aunt so-and-so? It was a nightmare Senator. And apparently about a day later, she wandered into a beauty salon over by Ala Moana and just sat down at a chair. And so the operator called the police. The police came in and found her. And it's only because she had something in her purse saying, call my niece. We had this on TV. We had missing persons reports filed with the police. It's not that they were terribly unhelpful, but they really weren't on it and they didn't connect the dots. And so to me, what this shows is that not only do we need a more formalized program, we also need training for the police officers. But the fact that they had, the fact that she was on TV, they had a missing persons report, and when they found her there, they still didn't know that she was on the list, to me proves the point that you need something more formal like a silver alert. So, that, it's not always in my job that I have personal experiences, right? We represent people with disabilities. But this was quite eye-opening to me Senator. And listening to Caroline and I've watched other people tell personals, people that we deal with professionally, telling these personal stories is very compelling. And I think it really proves the need for this bill. And I know there are two more bills. I won't bother repeating the story when the other bills come up. But I did, I did think that this experience that happened to me would be helpful to you as the policymakers on this bill. So, thank you for hearing that out.
Thank you for your testimony Louis. Jerry Simon from Hawaii Family Caregiver Coalition has submitted testimony in support. Ron Chibabuku from the Alzheimer's Association.
Hello Chair. Waukai, San Juan Ventura, Vice Chair Lafontaine, members of the committees, thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm Ron Chibabuku from the Alzheimer's Association. I would like to commend the introducer as well as the Senator Lafontaine, as well as the introducer of Senate Bill 2486, which is also on this agenda with the intent to establish a silver alert with similar purpose. So, thank you very much and we'll stand on our testimony, strong support.
Thank you Ron. Glenn Higa from the Parkinson's Association submitted testimony in support. Joan Kealoha from Hawaii Alliance of Retired Americans has submitted testimony in support. Rob Van Tassel from the Catholic Charities of Hawaii has submitted testimony in support. Jolie Tokusato from United Here Local Fire has submitted testimony in support. Kaylee Lopez from AARP, also in support. Members, I have a number of individuals who have submitted testimony, all in support. And I would jump to individuals who have indicated they'd like to testify. Shayna Kukila, IT, is Shayna with us?
Yes, thank you Chair. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today, Aloha committee members. I fully support this bill. And also, as a person with experience with law enforcement in my community regarding the developmental disabilities and kupuna missing, I want to offer just some suggestions for all of these bills, that there be a greater coordination of all these agencies who want to propose these bills, such as the DOH, DLE, the EHS. It should include adult protective services and child welfare services in this program. Because we know that a lot of foster children end up missing and also, we haven't even found some of them. In Hawaii, there is being proposed ID programs such as Kiki ID and kupuna ID with the police department. And they're trying to do this for the developmentally disabled. And I would say also, it should be for our homeless, drug addicted residents who need that help too. That could be provided through agencies such as Hope Services. Also, if you're going to be transporting these people, you may want to be in compliance with federal law, Title II. And also, you can use the database of the NCIC, which is the National Crime Information Center, so that if somebody wants to take the person, if they're missing and it's because they've been abducted, they can find them through TSA and other means. There also should be best practices such as least restrictive restraints, not, you know, if they're not in compliance, you have to, you know, if they ran away, maybe they're not in compliance with police officers. So, you have to have training on that. Possible funding partners, because it's federal mandates, you can probably get some money from them. And police reporting standards and looking at Georgia law, their silver alert law is much better. Thank you.
Thank you Shayna. IT, is it possible where we could minimize the clock and maximize the person testifying for the future? Back to in-person Kathleen Wyatt.
Good afternoon, Chair, Chair and Vice Chair, Committee, sorry. I've been working with seniors for about 25 years now and right now, I care for 80 people with dementia. The importance of the silver alert is folks with dementia are devious and they're determined. And if they have a reason they want to go outside, they're going to go. And it doesn't matter how many people are watching them. If they're in a nursing home, they can get out even though the staff is, is prepared, is watching all of the staff and everything. So, getting the silver alert out immediately, it will save a lot of lives. I started in Georgia and in the wintertime, they get out and they get tired and they get cold, so they go behind a building and die because of the, because of the cold. So, getting the silver alert out, making everybody know who to look for and be on the lookout is very important. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your commentary Kathleen. Joseph Burr, I believe, is joining us via Zoom. IT, is Joseph Burr with us?
Yes, he should be here on Zoom, but he's not, he's unfortunately not starting his camera yet.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to testify on this measure? Yes, you can come on in. IT, when Mr. Burr is ready, just let me know.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Hi, thank you Senators and Committee members. Rick Chambers, my name, and I do some champion stuff with Alzheimer's Association. And I'll make it real fast. My mother has Alzheimer's, talked about it through the years. She's stage four now, but she actually went out, so I'm from North Dakota. And so, to Kathy's point, she went outside at like 1:00 in the morning. They found her at 7:00. It was 25 below zero. She's now missing finger, but that she survived was a miracle. They found her passed out on the deck with a screen door on her and all she could say is, I don't know why the door was locked and I don't remember why I went out. She could have easily wandered off and we never would have found her. I'm 47 years in mental health and I remember when the Amber Alert started when I worked in Seattle, what a difference that made. I mean, it was a peace of mind kind of legislation. So, I strongly support this bill and I'm sure you guys will find a way to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you Rick. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in person? Yes.
Good afternoon Senator, Chair, Chair and Vice Chair, members of committee. My name is Real Rasmussen. I'm here on behalf of Aloha Rescue to voice our strong support of the bill as an organization, but I'm also here privately. I'm a search and rescue canine handler and I actually worked with Mr. Burr and the search and rescue brother, William, who went missing and unfortunately was, was not found alive. The amount of pain that I saw that family go through in looking for research, resources, in looking for help, they, they went online, they went to the news, they were pleading with people. I was only made aware of him being missing eight days after he walked away, which in search, the first four to eight hours are so absolutely critical, especially if you, if you'd like to find somebody in one piece, let's speak. That it was, it was heartbreaking to go out and be on the street with a dog and a search and rescue vest and speak to people with flyers and, and it's this picture on it, when he's been on Crime Stoppers and he's been on the news. There's been more outreach than most missing persons of that demographic yet. And a lot of the people that I spoke to that live in the neighborhood, that live in Milani and Waipio, they didn't even know somebody was missing. So, for that to happen, everybody is so busy in Hawaii where go-go-go, traffic and home and lives, that if we get a chance to watch the news, it's great, but we pay attention to what's important to us and everything else kind of goes in one ear, out the other. And things like this get lost. And unfortunately, you aren't seeing things getting lost, these are our family members. It's easy, it's easy enough to say, oh, well, that's not my family member. Every person in this room, every person on this island is going to have some kind of an interaction with dementia. At the rate that it's growing, at the amount of people that have family members that are exhibiting signs, it's only a matter of time, whether it's somebody who has memory limits or somebody who walks away. And this bill is so important for getting the people of Hawaii, what they need, just look for their loved ones. So, we are in very strong support.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. IT, did we get Mr. Burr back?
Unfortunately, he left the Zoom meeting.
Okay. Last call for anyone in the room that would like to testify on this measure, 2305. If not, members, any questions? No? Okay. We're going to move on to the next measure that is Senate Bill 2345 relating to crisis intervention. First on our testifiers list is Michael Vincent from DLE.
Good afternoon again. Department of Law Enforcement strongly supports this measure. We do have a recommended addition to the language to specifically include dementia and Alzheimer's, which are the subject of Senate Bill 2552, which is being heard along with this. We believe that the crisis intervention training needs to include this, as well as all the other reasons that somebody would need to work with someone in crisis. One of the testifiers on the prior bill kind of hit it on the head. The law enforcement officers just kind of weren't sure how to handle the individual. We just want to make it clear that the CIT also includes dementia and Alzheimer's. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. We have testimony from the Department of Health.
Yes.
Okay, in support, with suggested amendments. Got it. Louis Erdishe, please, is going to join us via Zoom.
Yes, thank you Chair. Yes, Senator San Juan Ventura, I think at the 1:00 hearing, you made reference to the fact that there's a lot of bills on crisis centers and stabilization beds. And so, it is a little hard to keep track of and I think there's a few on, on this agenda. But yes, these bills are clearly some, what is needed. I mean no disrespect to HPD or, or any of the county police officers, but we've seen a lot of situations, all you had to do was read the Civil Beat article from yesterday about the fellow that was shot out, out in the Wainai area. Police officers are not often properly trained to deal with mental health episodes. And so, they come upon a situation and they, they don't necessarily know how to properly de-escalate it. You know, maybe there are times when force is necessary, but there's a lot of times when maybe you don't need to do that. And so, so basically, this bill would, would require training and, and also sending people to crisis centers instead of the ER is clearly the way to go. So, we think this bill, and there's another bill very similar, so I won't bother repeating my testimony either, but, but clearly, this is, this is a major, important issue to tackle this session.
Thank you Louis. Robert Cavaco from Sho'po has submitted testimony in support. Connie Mitchell from IHS is in support. Darah Carlin, individual, we have three individuals, four individuals, all in support. Is there someone named Shayna Kukila is joining us via Zoom? Welcome back.
Thank you Chair and Committee Members. I apologize, I have a lot of passion for this subject, so I appreciate you hearing me over and over. In Hawaii County, we have an officer train, officer training called Crisis Intervention Training that I've attended recently as a public observer. And I want to commend the Hawaii Police Department, Hawaii County Police Department for their efforts, because now we have, they actually have badges on their uniforms that will indicate that they are these crisis, crisis-trained intervention officers. And the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, are their partners. And they get federal funding and all this stuff, so I'm just offering that as some kind of resource for you, if you want to go to Hawaii County and see how they're doing their program and see if the state wants to model that program. And the other one is, it needs to be standardized, police reporting. So, whenever someone is missing or in crisis, there needs to be some kind of a model form or something to, for officers to fill out, so they don't have to just make up their own stories. It can say the person's diagnosis, whatever they observed, behaviors, if the person has a mental illness or a disability according to records or whatever. And also, there should be a statewide database of these cases. So, say a person gets on the plane and they're from the state hospital, there's NC, there's a NCIC, like I said earlier, and there could be also a state database to say, hey, this person should be over here, not on the plane. So, these are things that I think we need to look at for this bill. Thank you.
Thank you Shayna. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure, Senate Bill 2345?
Thank you again for hearing this bill and giving me a few seconds here. So, I, I worked in Seattle Mental Health for 30 years and part of King County's initiative quite a while ago, after some very horrible deaths of mentally ill people dealing with officers that were not able to manage the situation, was that we moved to just what she was talking about, it was the Crisis Response Intervention Team. And our agency, Seattle Mental Health, was active with that and I worked with that as part of the training. And I would say across the board, it was for first responders in general, and everyone that actually attended that training was very thankful, because it gave them some insight. We actually went one step further. We had just what she was talking about, we did have that database. And the database told folks who, the client, if they were a client of a mental health agency, who their agency was, who their clinician was, and we could actually tell them to intervene and help with the situation. That's more than what this bill is asking for. What I would just say is, I really strongly support the training, because everybody that went through that found it useful. It even got to the point that it was on their laptop in their car, they could do it in an hour while they were killing some time, and they would just do it annually. Or, they would actually check in with us, because they knew we were their clinicians and we could kind of help them understand who that individual was, because each person's a little bit different. So, I strongly support this and I hope you do as well. And I really appreciate everybody here in support as well. Thank you.
Thank you Rick. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2345? Members, any questions? No? Okay. For the next measure, SB 2486, this mirrors the bill we heard at the top of this agenda. And the introducer of 2486, as Grace Lee said, she's going to defer to the introducer that's over here, of 2305. So, if you don't mind, audience, we're going to just move on to the next measure on the agenda, which is Senate Bill 2552 relating to dementia. First on our testifiers list, we have Michael Vincent from DLE.
Thank you again. Department of Law Enforcement strongly supports this effort. What we'd like to do is see that the, this actually be included in the crisis intervention training, which is kind of where it belongs. We've got some comments, I'll leave the comments to you, but we prefer that we fix the other bill and actually include it in a comprehensive crisis intervention for the, not just the department, but we're looking at actually coordinating the training statewide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carolines Cuddy-Rao from the Department of Health.
Thank you again. Caroline Cuddy-Rao with the Executive Office on Aging and Attached, Department of Health. Will stand on our testimony in support and defer to Department of Law Enforcement for implementation. Thank you.
Aintree Walter, Althorus, excuse me, State Council of Development of Disabilities.
Aintree Walter, Senate for Aintrees, Senate will support.
Oh, thank you for being here. Lila Moore from Kukua Council has submitted testimony in support. Kalani Werner from UPW has also submitted testimony in support. Eric Abin from the Hawaii Primary Care Association.
Hi, Eric Abin, Hawaii Primary Care Association. We are in strong support of this measure. I just wanted to, I guess, highlight a couple of things. First, we've worked very closely with the Alzheimer's Association on this, as well as the silver alert bills. Secondly, I just wanted to note, as you peruse the testimony, you'll notice that there's been support of this particular measure by both labor and management. Generally speaking, matters dealing with training are usually contentious, but in this case, it seems as though both labor and management agree that this training is essential. And, you know, if anything, that's more a testament to the leadership of the Alzheimer's Association in trying to bridge labor and management into doing something that is the right thing for the people of the state. And so, I'd like to commend the Alzheimer's Association. I'd like to commend both labor and management for coming to the table to actually do something that will truly benefit the people of our state. And so, with that, thank you.
Thank you. Louis Erdishe, joining us via Zoom from Hawaii Disabilities Rights Center.
Unfortunately, they're unavailable on Zoom Chair.
No, thank you. I've said what I wanted to say, so you may as well keep, keep moving.
Thanks for monitoring us Louis. Jerry Simon from the Hawaii Family Caregiver Coalition has submitted testimony in support. Ron Chibabuku from the Alzheimer's Association.
Thank you Chair. Ron Chibabuku from the Alzheimer's Association. I do want to commend the Department of Law Enforcement for recognizing that this is a very important priority and issue. Also, in addition to that, the county police departments have also been engaged in a conversation with us to ensure that there's implementation of this in their various agencies. So, I do want to acknowledge the importance and significance that these agencies are placing on dementia and ensuring that their officers have the foundational elements which is proposed in this, this bill to, for their officers. I also want to point out that this training is, is in the bill, is specifically for one hour of training annually at no cost to the officers. So, I also want to point that out in the, in the proposal. Thank you, strong support.
Thank you Ron. Glenn Higa from the Parkinson's Association has submitted testimony in support. Kaylee Lopez from AARP, also in support. We have indicating, they're going to testify, Kathy Wyatt.
Thank you again. Kathy Wyatt with Holly Holley Hawaii, which is adult daycare for folks with dementia. The training is so important, because I'm an educator. I train nurses and CNAs on dealing with dementia. And there are so many nuances that if you don't understand the disease, then there could be danger to the client and the, and some, if the police don't understand, it's the disease, not the person, it can make a big difference. So, training is utmost importance.
Thank you, sir. Do we have Joseph Burr on Zoom? IT, is Mr. Burr still there?
They're available, but they're not, they're unfortunately not connected. They don't seem to be connected.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Burr. Anyone else in the room want to testify on Senate Bill 2552? Yes, hi Rick.
Thank you again. So, I'll add to what I was talking about previously. And what I'll add is that when I worked at Ranat Home doing in-home care services, every CNA or every, every caregiver that we had go into a home to work with somebody with dementia, had to complete online training and we had to be, we had to feel comfortable that they were going to be comfortable with that individual. Again, because the needs are what they are, it's not just the wandering, it could be, they could be sundowners, they could be acting out. It was just so important for them to understand that. And for officers who are just going to come across a situation, which is a crisis situation, that they're going to have to de-escalate, the training becomes just super important for them to understand best ways, best practices to work with those individuals. So, again, I support the bill and I thank you for supporting it as well. Thank you.
Thank you Rick. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, members, any questions? No? Okay. We're going to switch gears and talk about something completely different. Senate Bill 2565 relating to parks and what dogs do in the parks. First on our testifiers list is 20, on 26, 2565 is Alice Lee from the County Council of Maui has submitted testimony in support. Stephanie Kendrick from the Humane Society.
They're unavailable on Zoom Chair.
Okay, they are in person.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you, no problem.
Thank you Chair Waukai, Chair San Juan Ventura, Vice Chair Lafontaine, Committee Members, Stephanie Kendrick with the Hawaiian Humane Society. I do want to acknowledge the departure from the serious matters at the top of this agenda, but we were delighted to see this bill introduced this year. The present rules for dogs in parks are extremely confusing and The present rules for dogs in parks are extremely confusing and inconsistent across the state. And we believe that well-behaved leash dogs should be welcome in our public spaces. So I would love to see this passed. In fact, I'd love to see a similar rule adopted for state parks, which also have very inconsistent rules about access for leash dogs. I appreciate the sponsors' intent, and you have our written testimony and support.
Thank you, Stephanie. Members, I have at least another 15 individuals all in support of this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 2565? If not, members, any questions for Stephanie? Thank you. We're going to move on to the next measure, that being Senate Bill 2903 relating to wildfire affected areas. On our testifiers list, we have Alice Lee from Maui County Council has submitted testimony in support. That's all I have. IT, by chance, is there anyone else online that would like to testify on 2903? Nope? Sorry, members, nobody here to question? So we're going to move on. And actually, I'm going to hand it over to my partner here in this joint committee, Chair Sanvoina Ventura.
Okay, thank you very much. So we're moving on to SB 2246 relating to crisis intervention. First up, we have Hawaii State Department of Health in support. Next, we have the Judiciary State of Hawaii in support. Next, we have Louis Erchak, Hawaii Disability Rights Center in support. Louis, are you present on Zoom?
Yep, same testimony on the crisis. It's a very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support. Next, we have Shana Kokila in support. Shana, are you present on Zoom?
Yes, Chair, thank you for allowing me to come one more time. So according to the, I'm supportive of this bill. According to the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, studies estimate that between 70 to 85% of cases of against a disabled adults go unreported. And 5% of those crimes, of reported crimes against disabilities were prosecuted compared to 70% of their peers. So what I'm saying about this is although we want to say that it authorizes a person believed to be imminently dangerous to self for others by law enforcement, we also should consider the fact that they need to be protected too because they may be victims of crime themselves. So we need to work on a better plan to create more justice for individuals with disabilities or the elderly. We know that the elderly are specifically vulnerable to attacks. They've been, you know, there's been laws in Honolulu County against elder abuse. So I'm hoping that we can strengthen the laws for protections of the disabled and elderly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 2246? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, we're moving on. Next up, we have SB 2463 related to mental health. First up, we have Department of Health in support. Come on up.
We wanted to add one more.
Please identify yourself.
Courtney Motsi, Medical Director and Acting Administrator for Adult Mental Health Division at the Department of Health. We stand in support of this. But we do want to recommend that there is a more clear definition of telehealth to ensure that it is limited perhaps to real-time video conferencing and not telephonic means.
Okay. And that's in your written testimony, I believe. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Rod Miley, Judiciary in support. You're not Rod Miley. Please identify yourselves.
Sorry, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair. My name is Jennifer Wong. I am the Staff Attorney for the Criminal Divisions at First Circuit Court. We do stand on our written testimony. I did just, however, want to point out the amendment that we are seeking to make to the provisions of Section 704-421. We believe that they are important to ensure that the time period that is, that the person is either committed or awaiting a determination of fitness to proceed is utilized by assessing that individual to determine whether or not we need to proceed via ACT involuntary hospitalization or simply get them connected to AMHC services so that once the case is dismissed and they are released, we have things in place in order for them to not just come back in to the revolving door.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support. You're not Johnson. Okay, Alan Johnson again. Next, I see Louis Erchak, Hawaii Disability Rights Center on Zoom.
Yes, thank you. There's a lot of stuff in this bill that I think is really good. I like the idea of having the flexibility to not commit somebody to the health director's custody while they're doing the fitness examinations. And I like the idea of being able to dismiss the charges if it's a nonviolent petty misdemeanor and fitness can't be restored. So I think it's a good bill. The one question that I still have, we had some discussion in the House this morning that I'm still not totally clear on, is the telehealth examination. And I'm a big fan of telehealth. I think it offers a lot of promise for treating people. But if an examiner is going to conduct the fitness examination via telehealth as opposed to in-person, are we doing this just for speed and convenience? Or, I mean, is there any risk that we sort of lose some of the value that you get via the personal face-to-face contact? And so is there any question about whether the evaluations are going to be less accurate? I mean, I don't know that they are, but that's what I would maybe urge the committee to take a look at and make sure that that's what's going to happen if the procedure's in place for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Louis. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on SB 2486? Okay, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. SB 2854 relating to homelessness. First up, we have Attorney General providing comments.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. I'm Deputy Attorney General Marjorie Lau, and our department has provided written comments to help support the intended implementation of the bill, and I'm available for your questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Department of Transportation providing comments. Next, we have Malcolm Ching, Waikiki Community Association in support. Next, we have US Army Garrison Hawaii Colonel McGunmago providing comments. Colonel, are you present on Zoom? Okay, moving on. Next, we have Hawaii Military Affairs Council providing comments. Shana Kokila in support. Shana, please proceed.
Just wanted to edit my written testimony. I appreciate this bill, and I do support cleanup of the garrison. So mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Illy McCaffey in support. Terry Yoshinaga in support. Ted McNeahan in support. Danielle Bass in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 2854? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, moving on. SB 2880 regarding relating to childcare. Okay, first up, United States Department of Defense, Kelly May Douglas in support. Kelly, please proceed.
Nice to see you. Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. My name's Kelly May Douglas, and I am representing the US Department of Defense. Happy to provide comments and support of the policy changes addressed within SB 2880. I will stand on my written testimony. Just wanted to reiterate that by exempting COD-certified family childcare providers living off-base from state licensure and registration that is duplicative of the certification they currently receive from the military services, Hawaii has the opportunity to enhance the quality of life and economic security of both the providers and military families seeking qualified childcare options. We appreciate this opportunity, and thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. For SB, moving on, next we have Kathy Betts, Department of Human Services, providing comments. DHS. Okay, thank you, Scott. Okay, next up, we have Hawaii Military Affairs Council in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 2880? Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. SB 3118, first up, relating to emergency public assistance. First up, Department of Human Services in support. Oh, Joseph Campos.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee members. Joseph Campos, Deputy Director, Department of Human Services, here on behalf of Director Betts. The department stands on its written testimony in strong support of this administrative measure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have State Procurement Office providing comments. Next, we have Shana Kokila in support. Shana, are you present on Zoom?
Yeah, I just want to stand on my testimony. I have full support of this measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Shana. Okay, anybody else wishing to testify on SB 3118? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on. SB 3126 relating to emergency aeromedical services. First up, Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chairs. Lauren Kim, Policy Officer for the Department of Health. We are in strong support. Thank you so much for hearing this bill. It is part of the governor's package, and it's very important. And like some of our other big ideas, this is a work in progress, so we ask that this bill keep moving while we negotiate with the legislature and stakeholders. I think the legislature understands that routine access to healthcare in rural counties, rural areas is difficult, sometimes requiring flying off-island. Access to emergency inter-island transport is tenuous, can be tenuous. We have two providers. It's a market-based provider. It's a private enterprise that provides inter-island emergency medical transport. We used to have two providers. There's only one. You may recall an incident, a tragic accident a couple of years ago that really inkeyed emergency inter-island transport for about half a year. So the department has proposed a sort of modular model based on some existing activities we know that are going on, specifically the county of Maui, that can be configured differently. For example, it could be contracted out. It could be a public-private partnership. We do think that the state should maintain a coordinating role to make sure that the system is working up to standards in all areas. We've put a price tag of about $18 million for long-term lease to own, including maintenance. We need to find partners who are willing to finance the staffing and some modest infrastructure like hangers. But we are available to answer any questions. And again, this is a work in progress. And so we just hope we'll keep the discussion alive. And like I said, it's very modular. We can go statewide. We can pilot this in one county, and we'll be available for questions. Thank you for your support of this measure.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Queen Health Systems in support. Tiffany Lightfoot, Global Medical Response in support. Oh, good, come on up.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanvoina Ventura, Chair Wakai, Vice Chairs and Committee members. My name is Tiffany Lightfoot for Global Medical Response. I'd like to stand on our testimony and just highlight, we are so appreciative of the committee prioritizing this report, this bill, and we're happy to support any improvements to the EMS system. And we fully support that this is a work in progress. We're happy to share any of our manao and knowledge and experience for transporting across the state as this develops. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have William Bailey for American Medical Response in support. Members, any questions? Oh, excuse me, one more thing. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 3126? Seeing none, members, any questions? Senator Elifonte, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative, I think, from the Department of Health. Yeah, thank you for being here. I'm just curious to know, in terms of working with the counties, how do they feel about paying for the costs?
We have gotten so far as speaking with first responders who corroborate the need for a more resilient air ambulance system. We have spent the last part of the year doing the homework on some pricing, and we haven't approached that topic yet with people who are in a position to make decisions about budgets. However, we've been just working on sort of the merits of the proposal, making sure that it meets our standards and meets the needs of the people of Hawaii, and it reflects what the counties need. That's where we are in this process. We have a good model with quite a bit of detail. We've done our homework, even with manufacturers' aircrafts. So this isn't just website window shopping. We've discussed that in detail with potential vendors, and so that's where we are.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, I do. Stick around. $18 million doesn't sound like enough. So what are your proposals to get a match from the counties?
So $18 million is the cost of leases. We have yet to spec out because each of the county's needs are different. Some, you know, some of them are already EMS is run by private sector, some by the fire department, who may already have pilots. One of the benefits that I neglected to mention in oral testimony was the state proposes maintaining ownership of these helicopters as the financer, but they would be deployed full-time to counties who may use these for inter-island medical transport, search and rescue, fire suppression, law enforcement, et cetera, et cetera. So they are a new asset for the county. In terms of where the money is, to Senator Elifonte's point, where for the infrastructure like ground personnel, clinical staff, that would have to be negotiated. The state is offering to pay $18 million for the lease of the helicopters, and that includes maintenance, correct?
And staff.
Okay. It doesn't sound like you folks have fleshed out what the Aeromedical Services Partnership program would be. Do you expect to do it by reg? I mean, I remember talking to you folks offline, and the idea was to have like a county match on a like per-county basis. But that's not fleshed out in this bill.
Reg, administrative rules, we don't think are necessary at this point. This is more of a, I guess, a public policy discussion to make sure that, you know, for example, let's take the example of ground ambulance. The legislature was very wise decades ago to enact policy that says whether you live in Uauanu or Maalehu, you are theoretically within X minutes of an ambulance ride. And we just think that air ambulance, inter-island medical air transport, you know, could be treated with that same level of resilience. And like I said, we priced out the equipment, some of the services, but the other side of it that we think may be partner entities, we have to do that homework.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none. You want recess for decision-making? Are you ready?
Oh, no, we need to recess.
Okay, recess for decision-making.
Thank you for your patience. We're reconvening the Committee on Public Safety and Governmental and Military Affairs and our friends from the Committee on Health and Human Services for decision-making. On Senate Bill 2305 relating to missing persons, we'd like to pass this measure out with a few amendments, technical non-substantive amendments, and defect the date to January 1, 2042. Members, any questions, comments?
Just one comment. Thank you to the Chair of Health and Human Services. I know there are many bills on this, so I appreciate you deferring to this measure. And thanks to the supporters for coming out. Thank you, Chair, for hearing it.
No, thank you for keeping all of us safe. Many of us approaching kapuna status, so I appreciate this.
Already there?
Bills for you, Joy.
Yep.
So I'd like to pass this measure with those amendments. Senator Elifonte, yes?
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 2305 with amendments. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator Rhodes?
Aye.
Senator Wa is excused. Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
So for Health and Human Services, same recommendation. Vice Chair, any comments from my committee? None? Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Kyo Kalole?
Aye.
Sir Shimu Kuro is excused. Senator Wa is excused. Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. On Senate Bill 2345 relating to crisis intervention, we want to make a number of amendments to this measure. We're going to take DLE suggested amendments regarding Section 3. And essentially, that's going to bring in language from the dementia bill, which is further into our, actually, it's 2552, bring that language into this bill to make it a little bit more comprehensive. We'd like to take the Department of Health's suggested amendments. We'd like to take the Department of Health suggested amendments as well, deleting the department certification, deleting Section Three, lines four through six, as well as deleting Section Five, the addition of Crisis Intervention Officer. We'd also like to blank out the appropriation that's currently in the measure and recommend that five hundred thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-five for the three crisis intervention coordinated positions to be in the committee report, as well as recommend that a hundred and seven, a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five to train and certify officers as outlined in Section Eight. So all of that will be put into the committee report, and we'd like to make this defective date of January first, twenty twenty, twenty forty-two. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendations to pass SB twenty-three forty-five with amendments of the four members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
So for Health and Human Services, same recommendation. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Three members are present, any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted.
Yeah, on Senate Bill twenty-four four, twenty-four eighty-six, we are going to defer action on this, because all of that language is now encapsulated in twenty-three oh-five. And the next measure, any discussion on the deferment? Anybody guys? Next measure is twenty-five fifty-two relating to dementia. Members, we put this language into the previous bill, and we just voted on, which is twenty-three forty-five. So the recommendation is to defer this measure. For the next item on the agenda is Senate Bill twenty-five sixty-five relating to public parks. Now, we'd like to move this bill out as is. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass as is, twenty-five sixty-five of the four members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
So for Health and Human Services, same recommendation. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Three members are present, any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. For Senate Bill twenty-nine oh-three relating to wildfire affected areas, the recommendation is to pass this measure out as is. It's a very important bill to our friends in Mahina and the lawmaker from Mahina. So hopefully, you will see the value in passing this measure out as is. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SB twenty-nine oh-three as is of the four members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
So for Health and Human Services, Chair is recommending the same recommendation. Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, three members are present, any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Okay, so relating to, for SB twenty-two forty-six, Chair's recommendation is to pass with Department of Health amendments and the SMA's proposed amendment, a note of blank appropriation amount, and I'm going to request Department of Health to give us a proposed amount prior to the next hearing. Other than that, any comments, questions, concerns? Pass with amendments, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, Senate Bill two-two four-six, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Three members are present, any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
For PSM, same recommendation on Senate Bill twenty-two forty-six, pass with amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SB twenty-two forty-six with amendments of the four members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
So for SB twenty-four sixty-three, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We're going to accept Department of Health's proposed amendment and Judiciary's amendments to Part One, and we will remove Part Two and other technical non-substantive amendments for clarity and consistency. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, Chair votes aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Three members are present, any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
For PSM, same recommendation to pass Senate Bill twenty-four sixty-three with amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SB twenty-four sixty-three with amendments of the members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
So for SB twenty-eight fifty-four, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We're going to accept the SMA's proposed amendments and otherwise put in a defect date of December thirty-one, twenty fifty to encourage further discussion. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, three members are present, any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted.
For PSM, same recommendation to pass this measure out with amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SB twenty-eight fifty-four with amendments of the four members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
So for SB twenty-eight eighty relating to childcare, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Going to put an effective date of July one, twenty twenty-five, and otherwise put in a defect date of December thirty-one, twenty fifty. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, pass with amendments.
Okay, three members are present, any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
For PSM, same recommendation to pass with amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SB twenty-eight eighty with amendments of the four members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. For SB thirty-one eighteen, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. We're going to accept the State Procurement Office's proposed amendment limiting it to two years, add in an effective date of July one, twenty twenty-four, and otherwise technical and non-substantive amendments. Also put in a defect date of December thirty-one, twenty fifty to ensure no further corrections needed. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, three members are present, any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
For PSM, same recommendation on Senate Bill thirty-one eighteen. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SB thirty-one eighteen with amendments of the four members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
So for SB thirty-one twenty-six relating to emergency aeromedical services, this is very much needed in the Thunder Neighbor Islands, but this is a work in progress. We are going to continue further discussions. We're going to be passing this with amendments. We're going to blank out the appropriation, but insert the eighteen million dollars into the committee report. We are otherwise, and we're going to put in tech amendments and any other, and add in the defective date of December thirty-one, twenty fifty. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Okay, three members are present, any reservations, any no's? Recommendation is adopted.
For PSM, same recommendation to pass this measure with amendments. Any discussion? Seeing none, Chair. Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SB thirty-one twenty-six with amendments of the members present, any no votes or votes with reservations. Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. We are adjourned with the joint committees. Okay, we are going to convene our Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs on our three o'clock agenda. There was just one item on this agenda, that is to make a decision on Senate Bill three zero one six relating to the Hawaiian flag. We had a hearing yesterday on this. Unfortunately, at the time, we didn't have quorum, but we do have that now. And this bill essentially is asking the military in Hawaii to put the Hawaiian flag next to the US flag on the military basis. We heard from the AGs as to why we cannot force the military to do that. So we'd like to change the shall that's in this bill currently to may, because Indo-Pacom is actually very supportive of putting their Hawaiian flag next to the others, and would like to see this measure go through with the may instead of shall. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elifante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SB three thousand sixteen with amendments. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Fukunaga.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Wa is excused. Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members, Richard.